Stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
All four members present, along with the control and superintendent.
Motion for adoption of the agenda?
So moved.
In a second? Any corrections, additions? We have the table, item B from, or item B from action item 11, budget revision. This guy is not here tonight, so we can do that next time. Any other corrections, additions? Here again, all in favor of approving the agenda, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Item five, communications recognition, open forum?
Yeah, the number of people at the open forum expressing their concern over the referendum, where we go from here, EBA. They were waiting for some information, which Mr. Winter is going to get to them. So, some of the things we've discussed before, the open meetings, information meeting.
Moving on to board committees. West Central Ed?
Um, we had our meeting with three new members, so I'm the only old one on there in more than one way. So I am now the president, or chairperson, not president, chairperson, yeah. So we met beforehand so that Lord Beavick could give them kind of a crash course on what West Central Ed is. We discussed the Beacon remodeling project and toward the building. Old architects are working to complete the remodel. The cost is about $500,000, which West Central Ed has put aside for that, and it should be ready before school starts.
All right. Health and safety?
We talked about the student injury reports, activities injury report, work comp report. Nothing really of, I mean, there's some injuries, but nothing out of the ordinary. And we covered that the film in the elementary was put on, and shattered through glass in their camera system. Right? That's what that is, yeah. And we talked about if there's concerns about anything else in the district safety wise. And we'll be looking into maybe putting some teaching or something on the windows in the elementary. It's just a discussion, not a sure thing, so you can't see into the lunchroom. Checking with the trainer to see if she needs an AED. A little bit about drills. Anything else that you? Yeah, it wasn't very long. That's it.
Uh, PTA?
So at the PTA, Parent Teachers Association, we discuss primarily the fun run, which is a fundraiser that the kids get to participate in. And local businesses donate money toward the T-shirts that all the kids get to have. And then they do a fun run in the gym. And this raises funds for lots of things like field trips for the elementary kids. And so we talked about all those details. The kids will also be able to participate in a ninja kind of ninja course thing that they put out. Last year was in the parking lot, I think we're gonna move it to the grass this year. But it's like all these blow up things that the kids get to climb on. And so that's a fun kind of reward for their doing the fun run. So discuss details on that and.
When is it this year?
Uh, let's see. I do not have that down here.
Okay.
It's okay.
The ninja is May 19.
The ninja is May 19.
The fun run is April 14. There you go. Yeah, I second that. That is correct.
Uh, that?
Let me start.
You can go, you can go, whatever.
Uh, we did a quick review of the winter activities. We went through everything, wrestling, dance, basketball, girls and boys, swimming, speech, knowledgeable gymnastics. Jonathan gave us an update, a lot of positive things in our sports. Yeah, I went into the numbers of participants. Last year at this time, we had 278. This year we have 20, or you see in 2023, we have 301. So we're up roughly about 23, 24 members, which is good. Third thing we talked about was specialization. We're getting to see more and more kids that are specializing in one sport versus doing two or three sports. Statistics Jonathan had shared with us is showing that kids need to do a multiple of things. You're not just wearing yourself out either mentally or physically. If all you're doing is running up a basketball court for nine to 12 months a year, that's not getting outside and running. Last thing was the school pride, which we kind of talked a little bit about, and this is a normal conversation. Where's the morale, where are the kids, are they participating in, supporting the school? Or are they pulling away from school activities, things like that? Anything else, Mark?
No, I just say the specialization, you know, they mentioned, Jonathan mentioned it's something that some students can only do one activity. They understand that, but the majority of them, they like to do multiple. Just, yeah, it just helps with them with everything.
What are some of the reasons why they can't or don't?
That we don't group them really well.
So they want to, but they can't, is that what you're saying?
A lot of going basketball, for instance, there's AU, you know, you play your high school basketball. Then you might go on to play AU basketball, and then there's the spring league three-on-three basketball. And then there's summer league with basketball. So that's just one example, there's so many other alternatives in that same sport. But then what you do is you're robbing yourself of participating in other sports with other kids. But once again, it's both mentally and physically beneficial to be doing a variety of things and not just focusing on one area. That's based on Jonathan's statistics study he had prepared with us.
So it's how would they like to do more if they can't because of?
Well, they can do more, it depends if they want to, if they specialize, then they can't do more. You know, if they.
It's just a trend that's kind of happening now.
Because right now, because right now, there's club volleyball in winter time. We know two girls that were playing basketball, went to club volleyball, ended in basketball.
Okay.
That hurts the basketball team.
Does any of that have to do with a better chance to scholar?
Do you want us scholars to get out of high school?
It's the choice. You want to get better? You see it a lot more in larger schools.
Big schools, I was gonna say.
Yes, larger schools, you see it a lot more. But in small schools, you need as many people as you can.
That and, yeah, and I think the research is coming out that you might be a really good basketball player, but the other sports give you other skills that if you're only focusing on one. I remember, I don't remember, Dusha talking about one of the basketball players, because he was a pitcher. He had learned different skills that were really helping him on the basketball court. But with the trend now, the kids are just thinking one sport. Because there's so many.
Have the kids given any of that?
Opportunity. I don't know if Jonathan has done that or not. I think it's just something that being aware of.
There's a few posters in the building too, I think one down by the middle school that says, I wrestle. And it's a professional, there's another professional, professional baseball player or just to show the diversification of different athletics and working different muscle groups. And just that you just think differently when it comes to.
It's the whole role of high hand coordination.
Yeah, yeah.
If all you're doing is one thing repetitively, you're gonna be really good. But there's other things you pick up in other sports that helps that high hand coordination.
It goes on a weird discussion.
Follow up.
Yeah, it would be interesting to hear why.
Yeah, talk to the kids, like a question.
Why some do it.
And I have seen though too, that for instance with the JO volleyball, the reports are very clear on your school programs first. So.
But the club is different. They go in the same club during.
Sure, but I'm just saying that.
There is money.
There is that.
It's the money thing.
Yeah, I'm sorry to you.
No, but that's why they're saying AU baseball, yeah. Yeah.
At JO, it's different.
So, C committee is Schools for Equity and Education, which is kind of, it's a lobbyist thing that goes to the state to lobby with the senators. And Jason Rarick is a senator, a Republican senator who talked at the latest C meeting. And he talked about special ed subsidy as being one of their top three priorities. He said his goal was to get the state to 50 to 75% and then prioritize getting federal funding. He was asked if equity was being discussed at the legislature, and he said it really gets tossed back and forth between the education people and the tax people, whose jurisdiction is it? He also spoke about the renewal of the operating referendum by the school boards that we've talked about. And said that it had been discussed that possibly to renew it once and then put it on the ballot as possible guardrails to that. And then Brad talked about, he got up and he talked about the flavor and the tempo of legislative session being very busy. Kind of a frantic pace right now with a lot of push to pass the big bills. Because so many bills were left hanging when we had the split control. And now the Democrats are in charge of both. They're seeing more lobbyists, more special interest groups. And he also expressed his disappointment as far as the equalization piece. He said, the way he put it was, the shopping cart was full by the time the governor got to our item. And then there was also a presentation by the TRA, Teachers Retirement Association, how to make the profession, the teaching profession more alluring to people coming up.
Stars County Family Services?
Besides all of the normal financial stuff that we talked about, we had a presentation from a woman who works for Greater Minnesota Family Services, and she specializes in art therapy. So she showed us artwork that she works with students, mostly teens and sort of like middle school, high school students. And talked a little bit about traumas and how they affect brains. And showed differences between like a 17-year-old painting that really looked like third graders painting because of a trauma that happened in elementary. And just describes the different things how they use art therapy, and it was pretty interesting. And about, you know, we could contact her, get in touch. She talked about how COVID affected kids and how they use art therapy with that, studying social skills. How OCD, internal phobia had gone way up, lots more anxiety to come, diagnosis. TriCap mentioned that they have grant applications open right now for low-income families to help pay for broadband. Yeah, we have that. And that they have started a new route in Western Stearns that will affect us. So they have another route that they opened up, that they got money for. And there's also some funding available for low-income families to help pay for childcare preschool if they have incarcerated family members that have through milestones. So, principles, if we have anything there, we could retell to them.
Community Ed advisory, Stacy gave us kind of the update. The programs are coming back. Still not probably at the level of pre-COVID, but they're coming back. Talked about things like the father-daughter dance and all that went well. Some of the program, one thing that caught my mind is that the Sauk River Basin folks that put on classes about native plants and just different things that you can do with your yard and plant. They kind of gone to other school districts, they're doing their classes virtual. And you know, like all of our classes, if they don't get a certain number, at least six, the class usually gets canceled. So they're going to all the locals, Aldini and Sauk, and they're getting enough people with them, they're doing them virtually. So there's a lot of things that are on the catalog that kind of seem appealing. And, but in the past, it really would be pretty rare that you get enough for a critical mass of the class that actually happened. So those classes are actually happening, they're just virtual, seem like a smart way to do it. Other updates, Sarah Flinty is doing some of their adult ed work. She gave us updates on the Dutchman Explorers Club, the preschool wraparound care, preschool programs. It seems like all those numbers at least are stable and not growing. And we now have ECFP back, so a good thing, we've gone a couple of years without it. So we have a teacher, certified teacher, and that is getting people in it, so that's.
Did you say the community ed classes here are virtual too, they offer a virtual, or that was at the other schools?
First, so there's a whole catalog of things, and some of those things that what I was talking about, that the folks from the Sauk Water, Sauk Water Center this week were putting on, they're actually getting numbers, so those classes are actually happening, they're just happening virtually.
But they're also in our catalog?
They're in our catalog, and in the past, some of those things would be in our catalog. They wouldn't actually happen because they would be. Now those things are happening because between just different districts, there's.
I've taken a couple of those classes, they're really good because he's got enough time in there. It's not so difficult, you can ask specific questions for your land and whatever, so it's very good, and he's very knowledgeable.
Elementary professional development.
We met at the beginning of the month, discussed what's going to be going on for the next workshop and worked on the ones for even for this fall. They're gonna work on science standards next August with the new curriculum. They are looking at scope and sequence for literacy at grade levels. Talked more about the letters, literacy training, how they're gonna work that. And unfortunately, at this time of year, there's not much left for workshop days or staff development. So they are working already on next year, some programs for the paras, they've already got kind of in place. Yeah, they talked about the cybersecurity videos, maybe doing some of those or doing them after school, the regular staff meetings. So kind of winding down and then starting again next year to see how soon they can get some of this curriculum to look at.
Policy review.
Mr. Winter, this is Peping and myself, had met last week in the review of the street policy that will be important.
District technology.
So in district technology, we talked about cybersecurity, looking at the Google sign-in security is another thing they're looking at. They're also checking in to see whether teachers want laptops or extended desktops. Trying to get that to be, to see what teachers really want to use, what they're happiest with. Especially when it gets to replacing things, do we, which kind do we really use? Look that, looking at the digital curriculum, trying to figure out how many teach, how many staff use certain digital curriculum is enough to be warranting keeping this, renewing it or dropping it. And then we had the really interesting one about GPT, which I had no idea what GPT was. So it's artificial intelligence, but the rest of you probably already know. So now teachers are looking at that because they can help kids do essay questions. And so how do teachers now deal with this? So that's another thing they're all gonna have to look at, and where do we go, and what's next? Yeah.
Say your lines about cheating, by doing essay questions, is that, or?
Yes, except that it's, you know, it's not plagiarism, because like one of the teachers.
At home, using it at home, okay.
And the teacher said you could use it, and like he tried to run off stuff, and every time you ask a question, it can come up with a different paper. So he said it's really hard to say, yeah, okay. So you get it, but it was like, oh dang. Another thing teachers have to look out for, and it's the school will have to come up with some kind of policy, and are we gonna live with that? And I think.
You can't read it out loud, you didn't write it?
One teacher though was trying to run off, the teacher was trying to run off all the papers he could and then comparing it to what the kids handed in, but he said, that can take forever. And I still, I got hit with one that they got, and so, and he said, most kids won't do it, but. So, another fun part of technology.
Pretty good.
Oh, you've done it?
No, no. For the college, for the, for the teachers at college, it's not so bad. They don't have to figure it out, but yeah. All right, moving on to administrative reports.
Just a through down behavior and academic data for you, just to take a look at on your own. So it's nice to just, for me to take a look at that, and make comparisons and contrasts. Student course survey, we've got our 11th graders survey, getting course requests for next year. We've got parent-teacher conferences coming up, and then dates and times are listed there. And then we've got senior open campus is March 16th. When they come back from open campus, we'll look to finalize senior class prep as far as.
Good evening, everyone. Just some updates, middle school student councils doing a staff or students food diet this week. They had it scheduled for last week, but with the weather, they moved it this week. All food's gonna be donated in Melrose Food Shell. Tomorrow, the eighth graders are gonna hear all the elective teachers talk about things they can schedule for as a high school student. They can put a name with the face and what the courses really mean, that they might see culinary, but not have any understanding of what's actually done in the class. We've worked with that throughout the years to find out what's best when students come to registration as far as eighth graders register for high schools classes. Then it's testing season. So our ACT is next Wednesday for 11th graders. Access testing has started, secondary access testing started today. And I just want to throw a huge thank you out there to the EL teachers and their support staff. They're testing around 150 students this year. And if you don't remember, every EL student has to be tested in reading, writing, listening, and speaking four tests. So it's significant for our EL staff and students. And then just happy school bar appreciation month, I appreciate you guys and the support that you've given us, so thank you. Any questions about any of that stuff?
The elementary this week is thinking up their one book, one school with a family engagement, family movie on Thursday night at the auditorium, so we're looking forward to that. And we too will be having spring conferences, ours will be just on Friday, March 10th, as we had two evenings in the fall. And as Lee shared, March 24th will be a half day of in-service and planning focusing on literacy and science standards. And then of course, the other half will be workshop day for teachers doing some grading and planning for the next quarter. And again, we're excited for kindergarten roundup, will be March 31st. We're having two sessions, one from at nine o'clock and one at 12 o'clock. And the kids are going to get to experience eat at school, to be in the classroom and do activities in the classroom, or even ride the school bus, at least around the block, so that they get on the bus and experience the bus. So we're getting back to more like what we had before the pandemic for kindergarten roundup. And then the elementary has applied, and it looks like that we are on the list for Minnesota Math Core Tutor. We had one this year, we're hoping that the same lady will stay, but we have asked for one and then two Minnesota reading core tutors for next year, so we're hoping we can get two next year. We did have two on the list, one did stay with us, she's been here two years. But the second lady had to withdraw because of family health issues, so she's hoping to be applied this fall. So we're hoping maybe that she can be our second tutor. Anyway, I too want to thank you for all you do for the district, students, course, and staff in our community. So thank you for all of you.
Thank you. Mr. Winter?
First of all, I want to thank my office staff, and especially Tammy Oliver, who kind of spearheaded the whole bond referendum process and valuing process. We filled a lot of, filled a lot of questions, had very few complaints about the absentee valuing district office. And Tammy oversaw what happened, it's been going, it went very smoothly. Wasn't just Tammy, it was all the district office staff that were training, so then we had a few people coming in time that people had to wait a very short time, so both of that went very well. Once again, thanking Tammy Oliver, she put a lot of work into that. The legislative session continues following the snowstorm last week. The February forecast, I think everybody saw in the paper, came out today, pretty much unchanged. Still around $17.5 billion of surplus coming in over the next biennium. Remember, that's not a given, that's projection that that money's gonna be coming in. And tomorrow will be our day, when I say our day, we belong to C, it was talked about earlier, Schools for Equity and Education. I'll be going down to talk to not only our representatives, but the speakers, not the Speaker of the House, but the minority speakers. Those representatives that are in charge of head of finance committees will be meeting and talking about tomorrow. And certainly talking about a lot of the issues and challenges that we have in our district. And finally, just to echo that, special thanks to the board. If there's anybody sitting in this room that knows better than me how much time and effort the board puts into this. You saw the whole list of meetings that they were at this month. We're gonna be going into negotiations, having negotiation sessions in spring, once the legislative session ends. And my experience with this board and work with those committees, they do an outstanding job. And I don't think a lot of people in the public understand that, so thank you to the board for all the great things you do. And you can see the ghost tokens of appreciation that are hanging around in the link from our students, so thank you.
Thank you. And the highlight tonight, moving on to non-action items, item A, Mr. Ring and the presentation from the German exchange program. Thank you.
Anyways, good evening, everybody. Good evening all to all the students from Germaine, who are here from the school, especially the host parents. And I think this is an extremely well-attended meeting, and that's good. The superintendent, Winter, administrators, and members of the Melrose Area School Board, thank you for inviting the student group from our partnership school, the Vindig Gymnasium in Brune, to tonight's school board meeting and for officially welcoming them to Melrose Area Schools. I have been the gap exchange coordinator at Melrose Area High School for the past 16 years, and it has been truly. And it has been truly enjoyable to meet the students and teachers from the Vindig Gymnasium over these years. And I'm grateful for Melrose Area Schools to recognize the importance of this annual cultural exchange. And just to throw a couple of things in there, Mr. Duttke and Vicky Duttke were part of the exchange last summer. And I think they had a good time putting their spot right down because you have to say this break. Same thing for Joel Ficken, the mayor representing the city of Melrose so incredibly well in Germany and throughout Europe. The Germany, the German American Partnership Program, that's the abbreviation as GAP, G A P P, German American Partnership Program. Exchange with the Vindig Gymnasium of Brühl is in its thirty-sixth year. And well over one thousand students from both sides of the Atlantic have participated in the exchange. This is my hope that with your support, the German language program at Melrose Area Schools will continue to flourish. And that our students will continue to have the opportunity to participate in the GAP exchange program. It takes patience, devotion and hard work to develop a program that benefits the participating students in various ways. That is academically challenging and provides an exciting and rewarding experience for the students and teachers. I would like to thank my colleagues from the Vindig Gymnasium, Sabine Egenhardt and Oliver Kirsten, they are seated over there, for accompanying the student group on this travel experience and I appreciate their efforts relating to this exchange. A big thank you goes out to the many host families in our community and their willingness to open their homes to the German visitors. They deserve recognition as this program depends on host families and we couldn't do without them. We greatly appreciate that. What is the program about and what are its key components? I'm just pointing out three of them. One is that students participate, students participate to enhance their language skills. When the Germans, the kids come over here, they obviously speak a lot of English. When our kids go over there, many times, and sometimes it's challenging because don't forget, the German kids many times start English very, very early on, sometimes in second, third, fourth grades. In some school districts in Germany, they start as early as first grade with English instruction. So when our kids come into ninth grade, it is sometimes a bit more challenging to acquire a foreign language at that age. And however, it is so important to do this because of various components that make a student better in thinking, in processing information, foreign languages enhances that. Also, they get to know another culture. When our kids or we as adults go over there, we see something completely new and our kids do the same thing. And the German, the students when they come over here, the cultural component is so very, very important. That we try to understand how other people think, how other people operate, how other people teach, how other people work and how other host families work. And the third one is to make new friends. The world is in need of new friends and people one can rely upon and one can have a friendly relationship. Also, in regards to this exchange, this is not a vacation. Unlike other programs where people go to visit sites with students, et cetera, and they visit primarily for a short duration of time, cultural places, tourist places. Our students do not stay as quote unquote tourists. What we do is quite different, this is an actual student exchange where both the German as well as the American partner experience each other's educational system and culture. Students are immersed in everyday American life when they come over here, attend school and participate in community events. And thereby gain insight into our culture that may impact their future lives. I look forward to continuing the work with the Vindig Gymnasium as this will greatly benefit students at all schools. In a little more than three months, the Melrose students will embark on their journey to Germany and we will visit the Vindig Gymnasium. Our students will experience the country, the people and the lifestyle of southwestern Germany. There are few students who will have such an opportunity to see so much during our three and a half week adventure. And I look forward to the journey with these students. Thank you.
Here's the president, Winter. Your principal, Dettke. Here, members of the school board and the parents and students. First, I have to admit, I'm not a English teacher, so I would be pleased if you perhaps excuse my maybe poor pronunciation. You're doing very well. You can choose which has better one. Let me thank you for welcoming us here tonight. To begin with, I would like to introduce us, Jeferrance, Romul and some of our students. And my rights is my colleague Sabine Egenhardt, who has been teaching chemistry and biology at the Vindig Gymnasium over twenty years. My name is Oliver Kirsten, I'm a chemistry and biology teacher too, some in English. And I teach that for about eighteen years, in the, in the, in the parts where it's pretty difficult. There are of course more people at our school involved in this exchange with Melrose. I would like to mention Barbara Decker, who has on the German side organized partnership program. And also our principal, Andrea Körner. They have both been here themselves and giving you their kindness regards and greetings. And we would like to say special thanks to our hosts, the Berchard family, the Dettke family and Dan Schaefer. They do everything to make us feel at home. Thank you for all, thank you all for hosting us and our students. The cooperation between Melrose and Brühl started in nineteen eighty-six and is part of the G A P P, the German American Partnership Program. That's nearly forty years of that successful exchange, which we appreciate very much. My first time in Melrose was in two thousand thirteen together with Barbara Decker. And it was such an extremely great experience for me. I have made new friends here in Melrose and these friendships have lasted for over ten years now. There are a few life, a few friends in life that are really important and friendship is definitely one of them. This exchange has fostered many friendships between students, teachers, parents, city employees and also firefighters. So it's a special concern of us to continue this exchange in the future. However, I would like to talk not only about myself, but also about the students. It's a great opportunity for our students to experience another culture and another student system and of course, practice with new technology. That's a, that's good for the, oh. Good evening, everyone. We're the German students and we will tell you something about intentions of our first appearances here in Minnesota. So for us students, there are several reasons to come to Melrose, so the language, of course. We are surrounded by English all the time and we can practice conversations with different people, which helps us to increase our English skills a lot. Apart from that, we are also excited about the new things we're getting touch with, to explore the country, its culture and the way of life. For me especially, it's something really special back here because I already spent my second half semester here in Minnesota and I enjoyed my time with it much. Now being back here and seeing all amazing people again is just.
Yeah, I'm Jonah, I'm in the eleventh grade. And I come here to be friends, to meet your families, to see another country, also another continent, to see the way of life in the cold right now. And to see life as a farmer, the way I've seen the life as a worker, as a student. And back in saying that this was for me the greatest decision in my life, because the time that I spent here was the best time of my life. All the new impressions, the people are so kind and strong for the parents, so we say thank you to everyone.
Yeah, sure. And I think the most important thing about this change is pretty to know our partners and their families. Because of course we are probably dangerous and professional, which are definitely worth it. But they wouldn't be as far as joyful as they are right now without partners. And this enables us to, in a sense, country in a way we wouldn't be able to over here. I also hope that we, as Germans, can give something back, not only with some of you guys are in Germany, but also by our presence right now right here. And I hope that we can give new presence, new perspective and support.
Hello, I'm Jonah and for me personally, this exchange is a dream come true. So all the messages have already participated in the exchange and have influenced the Melrose with its warmth and its friendliness. And through my stay here, I was able to create this picture to their stories and confirm that we are thrilled by the hospitality and the atmosphere shown to us, even though we are strangers to most of the people here. And several generations have already participated in this exchange. And for this, there's not only a unity core here in Melrose, but also in Germany, which I really appreciate.
Hi, my name is Lea. Since I arrived, we have wonderful and beautiful students, who are also looking forward to spend the rest of our visit with activities extended in the rooms for me to have that here, oh, I'm still. We appreciate the kindness everyone's showing toward us and also the effort everyone has made to give us a very pleasant time remembering staying here in Melrose. They're also so brave to make this experience and so most of us, this is the best experience ever made. So we just want to thank everyone who made this exchange happen and have crushed our game.
My task is really short. Just as for Oliver, this was my second visit to Melrose. My last visit was three years ago. But I have taken a trip in Zurich, in Zurich, while I was high, since I have hosted teachers with me three times. So this exchange is a matter of the heart for me. From this experience as well as the topic to some of my former students, I can say that this program has brought some tools that speak life blasting friendship and experience that will not forget for life.
But all of this will be possible about the great work that Stefan Wirth has put into the total partnership and the American side. He's the one who metrics the families and exchanges these, co-organizes, leads, organizes, and spears. And perfectly makes sure that everything will abide before. For this very elaborate and frank word, I would like to say thank you on behalf of my school and also personally to that. Finally, I would like to express my hope to the school board that also in the future, there will be lots of support and good questions in this exchange program. Thank you for your attention. Now, I have two little presents, no.
That's right?
Yeah. This is the flag of our region, it's the so-called Badener Flagge, the flag of the Baden, we belong to Baden. And I have got one for you, Mr. Winter. Oh, I can't, that's right. I hope it can find a place.
Thank you very much, very much appreciate, thank you for being here.
Good?
Very good.
That's one. Thank you. And he has our region, we also have like national enterprise only for our region, but he has students where if you have any please, it's for you. They want to sing it, they want to kill it.
Are you gonna help somebody else?
Yeah. Saying that as a joke, saying the M, we're gonna have to sing that song and take it with us, spirits. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Lee will be here. Chairman Heller had to step out for a phone call, so I'll just, yeah, sorry.
No, I just wanted to see if this was for Germany.
Go ahead. We gave thirty seconds, go ahead. Twisting, last closed the door behind him. For a question. Mr. A, can you close the door behind you then, just for noise? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, continue on as I stated, Mr. Heller, Chairman Heller had to step out for a phone call quick. So we will go into policy, our first policy consideration, just for everybody's information. These policies have to be reviewed three times before they become official policy in the school board. School board. So let's start out with policy five fifteen, Mr. Winter, what's an update?
Just a, also a quick response, we had a question to open the forum about these policies and the new reads on it. These are policies and the three that we're taking a look at tonight are reviewed by MSBA. That is our Minnesota School Board Association. What they do is they take a look at the policies, they make changes on recommendations from their legal advice based upon court cases, based upon changes in state statute. The first policy, policy five fifteen, protection and privacy of pupil records. You'll see these policies are on our website as they are now, these are the changes. Five fifteen is a current policy. When you go on the agenda on the, on the website, you'll see the reds are strike out, language is no longer relevant. You'll see the blue language is added language, so this is a redefinition of things within the policy. And just very briefly, and I just go over a brief explanation of these policies. Policy five fifteen is a subsequent outcome of Minnesota State Data Privacy Law HF two three five three. This was a big law that was passed last year to legislature to protect students' rights. And the students' rights comes from about when students are engaging in things on school property, especially whether it's ITV classes, college and schools courses, and also supplemental things that teachers are using in the classroom, that their data records and those things are being protected. When you do get an opportunity, you can go to our school website. And if you go to that website, you'll go, you can go to the main page. And if you go to menu, and you go down to technology on the bottom left, and if anybody has a question on this later on, you can email me. Where you click on technology, and then you click on that and it says electronic curriculum and assessment tools. You'll see a spreadsheet of different tools that the teachers are using. We have to, because of this law, we have to publish it on our website. And there is all the supplemental curriculum assessment tools that the district uses. And we have to make sure that the students' rights are protected so that information doesn't get out there. However, I think as we all know, students on their own are going to places, they're going TikTok, and their data is being gathered a lot. But as a school system, we have to make sure that we protect those students' rights. That's what essentially policy five fifteen is about.
Questions? Just stepping in, you did. What policy, three or five thirty-four, school meal policy?
For those that are following the legislature, the legislative session right now, there is the possibility of universal free meals in the state of Minnesota. So it sounds kind of silly to do this policy now. However, since we get funding from our meals from the federal government, if there's ever any changes in the federal government statute, we have to update these policies. And once again, these are just recommendations from MSBA. You see strikeout language and the added language that redefines different things within the universal, within our current meal policy. Once again, current policy that we already have.
Questions? Moving on to policy seven twenty-two, public data request.
Same thing, it's an existing policy that we have. You can go through that policy on the board agenda on the website. See the strikeouts, see the added language that is newly defined of how it defines different things of what data is, what requests are, so that people have that information forward as we go forward in these policies for two more weeks. That is policy seventy, seven twenty-two, existing policy.
Questions to Greg on that policy? Ask one question so I can catch up.
Oh, you're off the hook.
I'm going to help add over here now. We're just going to consent agenda. Sleeps every night. Sorry about that. I'll take a motion for consent agenda. In a second?
Minutes have been added from the campus meeting from last Thursday, as I talked about before, so we put those down there. Under personnel, you'll see that we hired two of our math teacher of our vacancies currently this year and their science teacher. Other than that, just a lot of other deck, deck employees that needed to be hired. A couple or one resignation and one leave of absence and just some additional coaching hires for this past month. Pretty basic, what a pretty basic hire. Some fairly significant hires here for the next school year because we're able to build, build the teacher vacancies.
Greg, I got a few calls on belfing, boys belfing, folks, any luck there?
Still looking. Mr. Grueff talked about the admitting meeting today, and I think there was some discussion that occurred after that, that there are some people that have been reached out to possibly fill that.
Is that our only spring question position open?
Junior high track and head boys belfing right now.
That's what you just asked about. We haven't had girls?
No, we don't.
The girls have been belfing.
Girls are spilled.
You did fill in the boys.
Boys and junior high and head boys is still open as of now.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah, there's been a lot of discussions locked around the building, a lot of ideas. Hopefully they'll get back to us. We're even have that starts in a couple of weeks.
Walking in the hall?
Twenty-eight, March twenty-seven, hasn't it? I think in the hallway, there's still snow out there.
I want to say it's a thirty.
March, seventeen, that was eighteen, seventeen. Better walk a little quicker.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the consent agenda as listed?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Moving on to item ten would be the treasures report. Motion to approve the treasures report? And a second?
I did get it, yeah, I did get a chance to talk to Erin Naska briefly today, and she's not feeling well. But I just wanted to make sure that I was able to give the board an update on currently where we're at. As Ms. Naska talks, there's clearly nothing out of the ordinary. The two biggest things that define comparisons of this year's and last year's, especially expenditures. You'll see that our expenditures are pretty much on target for where they were last year, right around forty-eight percent. One of the things that she talked about in developing the revision of the budget is a couple of quick things. The gate attendance is down a little bit this year, so that's going to have an impact on some of the revenue. I'm sure there's a number of different reasons for that. We're doing very well on our student target of enrollment. She built the budget on twelve hundred sixty students, we're considerably, considerably above that right now. However, it's, it's kind of been talked about over the course of the last half year. One of the biggest things that's going to hurt us this year is the compensatory funding. It is way down this year because we had universal free lunch the last couple of years. Our compensatory funding comes from percentage of students that we haven't approved as much.
The prior year?
The prior two years, but especially the prior last year. Yeah. Because as we went into it, fewer and fewer people filled out the forms. This year that shifted to anybody that's on medical assistance in Minnesota is automatically on free reduced lunch. So that will certainly help the budget for next year. But we're going to be down about four hundred thousand dollars this year. And that's going to be a significant hit on the budget. So just a couple of things we talked about, just, obviously I'm talking a little bit more than Ms. Naska usually talks about, but we're trying to do some just planning and coordinating as we work on the budget revision that she'll do in the presentation on the next month. We're going to take a, probably going to be deficit spending, not buy lots, but probably buy a little bit. And a lot of it's due to the four hundred thousand dollar loss in the compensatory money.
And the state will do nothing with this.
I'm not going to say that, we'll find out tomorrow, they're, they're trying to figure out a way to do something with it. It's just the, the cart got in front of the horse a little bit in terms of, well, we need to fix this, we need to fix, we need to give universal free lunch to everyone. And how do you determine what are compensatory funding? In compensatory funding is the additional funding that we get from the free or lose lunch rate that helps offset poverty rate.
And all other districts are in, all other districts with a decent size, free and reduced lunch population are in the same, they end up, they didn't end up with better numbers.
Better.
How do our percentages compare to some other schools around here? The percentage of students that are on free and reduced?
About the same, you know, about the same. The, the closer you get to the, all of these, the same cloud, it's a little bit lower. The farther you get from us west, south, and north in rural districts, and I'm not saying all of these not a rural district, but as you get closer to a regional center like St. Cloud, typically the number is going to be lower. We were hovering right around forty-eight percent total A twelve before the pandemic. And it's just hard to get the forms filled out, people to fill them out when everybody was getting free lunch.
So we're at forty-eight percent before.
Yep.
Is there a new number now?
I wouldn't venture that's under right now.
Do you just want to give a little bit of a background on compensatory funding? Not that people think we're talking about food funding?
Well, yeah, compensatory funding is what the district does get to offset if you have a large percent of poverty in your district. And what it largely allows you to do is decrease the class sizes. So we have teachers, not teachers, some of the salary that we pay to our teachers is right out of compensatory funding that we use to keep class sizes down.
How they determine the number, the funding number based on your free reduced?
Basically extra funding that goes into the general fund.
Right.
Based on your personal.
So you spoke a little bit about if this bill gets passed, it's free lunch, universal lunch for everyone. Has any discussion taken place of then, what happens to compensatory?
So it's, they've already decided to go to the medic, medical assistance model, haven't they?
Yep, they've already decided that, but they also understand that not everybody that would fall by would be unamended as well. Because everybody's tax situations are there. So we will, we will recoup next year our losses from the last couple of years for this year. But it's never going to be the same as what we were getting, and that was based upon our rate of poverty within our district. So, once again, I'll be having a lot of discussions on this tomorrow. Everybody, and I'm not saying universal free lunch is not, is not a good thing. It says that it put the.
There's a ripple effect.
There's a ripple effect on it to try and figure out.
And how about sports? You spoke a little bit about how that will cover the sports fees if they qualify for free reduced lunch.
Yep, generally in the district, we waive that. And also, we talked about at the admitting meeting today, also the number of free reduced lunch also has a factor of your student enrollment within the classes of sports. And it's going to have an impact on them as well.
So there's a financial ripple effect there.
We're hoping they figure it out. I don't know what the solution is, but that's why they're down there, trying to figure out when they push these agendas forward.
So as a male though, the free, free reduced system is not relevant to our funding. Because they've already decided to go, even if they, even if they continue with free reduced lunch and not universal lunch coverage, the model is going to go to the medical system.
Yes, it already has.
Already has.
It already has, this year.
But we, we don't get the funding until next year, we're always a one year lag, so we're still behind one year right now because we lost four thousand dollars this year from last year, but we will make up for it next year. However, we will never make up to the point where we had it pre-pandemic.
Do we know how many, if you were, if you're saying that forty-eight percent were free reduced lunch, what's our number of medical systems?
It's pretty high.
Is it close to forty-eight? I got, how close to forty-eight is it? Well, so when I see our free reduced numbers, I would say ninety percent of them are coming straight out of the MA. We have ten percent of people that have to fill out the forms.
Oh, okay. Because you can see that.
Because I, yes, I can see that. Being with that person, right now, our twenty twenty-three free reduced is forty-four point eight. So we're getting back up to that point, but still a little bit relevant.
Well, should that were at least impactful?
And you should have had a medical assistance somewhere?
Yes. If forty-four point eight would be part of that. Yeah, correct.
And you were saying nine, ninety, about ninety percent of that, forty-four?
Yeah, so what that medical assistance does is it doesn't make the parents fill out the forms for free reduced automatically. So ninety percent of people on free reduced are, don't have to fill out forms, it is just automatically.
So then that, that loss of almost half of a million dollars, where do we tap into for that? Which is part of what we have for surplus? Yeah. So, how the surplus that we don't want to tap into because it's too volatile right now for a medical system? Yeah. Can you say that louder?
No.
The state cannot always be trusted.
Changes rapidly.
You can say the state cannot always be trusted.
I never said that. State may be a thing.
It's very, it's very volatile.
I mean, I throw a bag over.
The balance we have makes it a little more comfortable. Correct.
We, we do wish there was more consistent funding there.
That kind of helps answer some of the questions that were thought of, really, if you can tap into what we have, we have to be a little bit protective of it because we don't double reference it.
Any other questions about treasure, treasure report? Hearing no, no more questions, all in favor of approving the treasures report? Aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Moving on to action items. Item A would be donations and gifts. Motion to approve the donations and gifts as listed? And a second?
Second.
Point out some highlights?
Yep, bring gift stores, speech program, a lot of donations to our auto program, especially vendors and things they work in. A lot of body, a thousand dollars to go from preschool, although helping the preschool teachers cover some of the things that aren't covered in their budget. And really nice thing, Stern County Sheriff's Department donated us two portable AEDs. We had talked about that in the last health and safety program to get a couple more AEDs. They are fully functioning AEDs, but they're just recommended for new batteries in them. So we're looking at possibly new batteries in them. And Tyler Johnson, our SRO, spearheaded the donation to that school.
Are they portable?
Yes.
Have we talked to the trainer about that again?
I haven't had a chance to talk.
That's one of the issues that came up with help today is to have the trainer have an AED. When they're out of the building, we don't be a big one.
What about staff, is the staff trained in operating an AED?
I think most of the athletic staff coaches are trained in the Giants. I've walked through it a couple of times, it's pretty self explanatory, but this one, actual training, probably not. Except for our, their last training was probably. It's something that we have, that we have.
Do we do this part of community ed?
Well, we can actually do it during the workshop.
Yeah.
Maybe there's public ones around town too, it would be helpful if more people knew how to use them. I threw some things there. There are, just maybe some how to work a fire extinguisher. There's a YouTube video up there. That'd actually be nice to go on the school website. Yes. Roll call?
Yes, please.
Pat?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Becky? Melissa? Yes. Mark?
Yes.
Becky, yes. Motion approved.
Item B has been tabled. Item B has been tabled for now. Item C would be. C I F District Tracy Ryan, here's random city.
You guys all have a copy of this? I'm sure they had a copy of it.
Oh, definitely have a copy of this. It's crazy.
Um, after detailed presentation.
And I know what I had to follow.
You can just wiggle.
Uh, well, it's, it might be.
Yeah, really.
Uh, so I, my name is Tracy Ryan, I'm a development consultant for the City of Melrose. City of Melrose is in the process of creating a tax increment financing district to help support the 72-unit multifamily rental housing project. Typically, uh, when the, the city creates a tax increment financing district, we send a notice out to the school. We let you know we're having a public hearing, the public hearing for this will be on March 9th. And you have the opportunity to come, we don't have a veto or an approval stake in it. But what the city's doing is a new type of TIF district that was recently authorized by some statutes uh, that allows them to create a workforce housing economic development district. Uh, it requires extra steps, the extra steps include surveying the vacancy rate of all rental units within 15-mile radius of the City of Melrose. That's potentially, those vacancy rates for the last two to three years have all been low, 3%. The majority of the folks I spoke to, I had the pleasure of doing that survey, um, was zero in waiting lists. Uh, there's a couple, uh, larger vacancies that are pending anomalies because of COVID or because of the way some facilities that are medical related, you need a license. So all in all, the vacancy rate is very, very low. So they passed that. Then with this type of TIF district, they're required to get a letter from a local employer, Jay Felton Dell with Carstens Industries, uh, submitted that and he very eloquently put that it is of extreme importance in at least his business and in his, many other businesses to be able to generate some type of housing in order for him to not just get employees, but to retain employees. The third step, additional step that's required with this is that the county board has to actually pass a resolution saying, we approve the creation of this district. Fourth step is the folks, uh, school board is required to pass a resolution, which I provided a, a copy to administrative winters or superintendent winters. Uh, and it, it does not mean that the school will have any additional role in the management or administration of the tax increment financing district. It's simply an acknowledgement that, uh, workforce housing is important and that you support the city's economic needs. I'll keep it brief, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
So where is this?
Uh, this is a new housing subdivision, or it's been planted for some time, it's Railroad Avenue West. So if you go down Railroad Avenue, um.
The way to the west is what some people call Lover's Lane, if you keep going, it's the gravel road. Past unsimply.
The Melrose Economic Development Authority purchased.
Right here. Yeah, okay.
The Melrose Economic Development Authority purchased that property. The west half is intended for multifamily development, and then the area in the east half, uh, is being considered for single-family apartments.
You were saying that this is a different process that had been even available to you in the past? And what's the, I'm not sure I understand what the difference or what the advantage is to doing it this way?
Typically, when you're assisting a housing project, you create a, a housing tax increment financing district. Housing redevelopment, economic development are the most common types of economic development districts. With a housing TIF district, the duration of the district is 26 years. But with that long duration comes income requirement, saying that, that any assistance that you provide, a developer has to commit to us, to providing either 20% of the units to folks at 50% of the county median or less, or 40, 60, apparently after 90% of the units to folks at 60% of the county median or less. And with the developer that we're working with, it's Granite City Real Estate Partners, um, they did a preliminary review of incomes in Melrose. And in order to meet those housing restrictions, they would, they, they, you know, reduce the, the size of the project. That, that was their only option, to reduce the size, because they couldn't financially help, obligate themselves to, you know, a 12 to 15 million dollar housing project and leave units open. When the legislature created the workforce housing TIF district, uh, they said, we recognize that there are good paying jobs in communities and that you can't always meet those income restrictions. So they said, we'll, we'll provide, we'll allow you the authority to create a TIF district that has no income restrictions, but we're gonna take it from a 26-year duration down to a nine-year duration. So that was the compromise. That's the difference between the type of district. And again, in the past, county, cities and counties were always provided notice of what the city's doing, they just didn't have approval or veto authority. That is the primary difference, no income restrictions, county and school, uh, approval by resolution, and then doing the vacancy rates. Does that make sense to you?
So the black dash is the new apartment?
That is the, that's the. Yep. Seventy-two.
How tall a building are we talking?
Likely a three-story.
Really, maybe this is not decided yet, but multiple bedroom units and single bedroom units.
Yep. It will primarily be two or three bedroom units, but there will be other number of.
It did, go ahead. The TIF does school, uh, spill over into the single-family housing.
For this, but when, when you're being asked for it, no, it does not, it is just for the. I, you know, I do fully expect that, you know, with the price of housing and financing and interest rates and all kinds of things going on in the market, um, that once the city does take a look at developing a program to promote affordable single-family housing, um, they would likely create a second TIF district, but it would not be in the workforce requirements, it would be that housing district.
And that would be that development, that's what I'm there.
That would be the area that is not cross-hatched, so.
Yeah, but that would be.
But it's already.
Call the same thing.
Right, that's the.
But that's an old, just to keep in mind, that's an old flat, we're actually gonna vacate that flat and they're, we're gonna create a new flat. So that was the original plant that was done for this development, and we're actually gonna be vacating that and putting in what's called a plan G and development for the whole project, which just gives us a lot of flexibility to have some type of housing that people. But that's the same area.
The same area, yeah.
Just it'll be two cul-de-sacs instead of what you see on that map.
But it'll still be proposed at 25 block, at 25 block?
They'll still be, uh, between 24 and 26 depending on what the cul-de-sacs.
What about senior living, like the right next door? I know they're maxed out. This would not be senior, but this is a single family.
So it is not a typical senior living, uh, project, now that's not to say the people that are seniors wouldn't live.
Correct.
Yeah. It's not a tax credit project, which is what you typically see for senior living projects. There is also a development going right next to city center, which is 29 units that might serve seniors, but I would imagine it's gonna serve seniors that probably have a little bit higher incomes.
And this is a low, this is low income housing proposal, for the.
No, market rate.
Market rate workforce housing. Yeah, it will not.
For above the houses and they are.
We have, we've got work on the single-family housing, so we're only talking about the.
Yeah, and the single family again is not proposed to be included in this TIF district.
So do low-income folks have? Is there some incentive for the folks that build this to actually sort of meet the low-income folks?
There is no direct incentive for them to do that. I think it's the city to try and attract the developers that, that can address lower income.
In a different project or?
In a different project. Which will be a huge one.
So, so this, when this gets built, how is that affected, or the money that we can tax out of that property, how, what's the bottom line for us?
For as long as it's within a TIF district, you do not receive the increase. As soon as it's released from the TIF district, then you receive the increase. And I believe your increase, increase is somewhere between 70, 80,000 dollars a year.
After nine years.
After nine years. The premise of tax increment financing is, were it not for TIF, the project would not happen. And you're not gonna be losing any. But because the project requires assistance, you've got your share of, of the increase in taxes, so that you will have it in nine years.
It's not low income.
It is not low income, no, it's workforce housing.
But Cleese, you're looking at plotting this all and developing it at the same time via marketing.
Uh, the only thing we're doing is putting a road in at this time to get out to the apartments, the two cul-de-sacs, they would have to come later, we'd have to phase those in at a later date. But the plan is to eventually get this whole area developed.
Through the selling of lots.
And those lots, would they have tax advantages?
Very likely they will. In order to, we would make that happen, we would have to put together a multitude of programs to try and make it affordable and market to folks who need it.
So it does, I'm just picking the most recent, if the morning court or the property that's. Daylight Court, do they have a tax advantage? So why are we? So why are we subsidizing this? Why, why would we, why would we subsidize a developer building? I can see the apartments, workforce housing, but why would we subsidize a housing development when we didn't subsidize Daylight Court?
I, I think the full answer is that there are all different types of housing needs within the community, and some require greater assistance than others. The developers will tell you that if it were not for tax increment financing, we would have to pass, pass along all of the costs in rents, and those rents would not be affordable to working families in the community. And they will take their investment to St. Cloud, or, you know, or Alexandria, or a larger place. Doing any kind of a housing development in a smaller market like this is, is risky, is much more risky for them than to build in a college town or next to a college town. So we're trying to incentivize getting the housing in Melrose, so we keep people in Melrose and attract people.
But just to clarify, so we're talking, there's workforce housing, but then there's a housing development. What we're voting for today is the crosshatched area that is workforce housing and apartment housing, right?
Correct, multifamily.
The, the bigger triangle here, you, it sounds like you would like it to be lower, uh, single-family housing that is lower income. But we're not voting on that today.
Correct, that's true.
But as a sense of day, would be identical to Daylight Court, there's no tax.
No, I, again, in tax, you know, the thing like Court, we've got houses with values that range from 200,000 to five, six hundred thousand. Uh, that's not entry level for a small, for a young family or, you know, a low-income family. So the two potential cul-de-sacs, and I hesitate to be too far ahead of myself, because council hasn't acted on what actually would happen then. But the idea is that a standard housing tax increment financing district would be created for that single family along with a multitude of other programs to help folks get into entry housing, where housing prices are, I don't know if you can even build a house for 250,000 dollars anymore, but that 250, 300,000 dollar. So the difference between that area and Daylight Court, what we see, you know, across, you know, across the road and over a couple of buildings. Those, those houses are much more expensive, I'm not talking about building houses like that. And that's why TIF assistance would be used, for modest houses for low-income.
And you would come back to us, uh, with that kind of proposal?
With a standard housing district, we'd send you a copy of the plan and a notice of the, the public hearing that the city would have, but you would not be required to get back to former, that's the difference between workforce housing with no income restrictions and a standard housing TIF district that would have income restrictions. So you'd be provided notice, but you wouldn't have to take formal action towards it.
And if Daylight Court did not want anything low-income in there, they didn't even want split-level homes in there when that was developed? Yeah, I guess my point is, what I'm trying to get at is, like, I'm fine, I, we need housing, we need, we need low-income housing. I, I'm a little, I'm going back a couple steps, like, the developer doesn't think that the market can support low-income housing. Seems a little, eh, seems, I drive through certain neighborhoods there in Melrose and think, boy, we could use low-income housing. And then coming back to a school district and not being able to tax that development that is not low-income housing. I think, I, that's why, that, that's where my questioning is coming from. I guess I'm, I, how can, it's still convinced me that there is no need for low-income housing.
Oh, there's absolutely no need for low-income housing. Uh, you know, the type of unit, this is a development that is worth this type of housing, however, understand the tax and financing does not go to. Well, I, I wanna say, it doesn't go to reducing the rents, it's to help them manage the rents at an affordable level. So if, if this, if this particular development, and sorry, I don't have the rental guidelines with me, but we're still talking about 1100 dollars a month in the rent. So even if, even with the subsidy, low-income folks can't afford that. Type of project where lower folks, uh, lower, lower income folks can afford it is how possibly through a town housing tax credit project. Uh, and I've gotta tell you, there's a tremendous amount of resistance in this community to allow low-income housing tax credit projects. So if that's where your need is, you need to let your city council know that we need to do what has to be done there to address that concern.
So. How do we know, it, it just, how do we know that if we're gonna say, oh, we're not, we're gonna, it's gonna be a 10 million dollar project, we're not gonna get any property taxes for nine years for this, for the benefit of the school district, there's folks that are gonna live there? How do we know that we're not just, that we're not just supporting the developer? How do those things, how do those, how does, how does that get translated into the people, workforce, folks that are renting there? And it's not just going to, to the, to the developer?
The developer has submitted an application, uh, for the assistance, they have, uh, shared a pro forma that lays out what their project costs are, what their operating incomes and revenues are, and what their rates would have to be with TIF and without TIF assistance. And quite honestly, as I said, developers will build these all day long in St. Cloud, Soft Rep, it's Alexandria, those kinds of things. And in the end, the, the number that, that they're willing to rely on is they're, in order to keep the rents at the level that they think Melrose can afford, their rate of return has to be something. And so we are supporting the developer to get these housing units built.
As part of this project, have they given any kind of estimate or proposal on what rent would be? And just the quality of their, they have, and again, please don't pull me, I can, I can sure share that with Greg, you know, so that you've got a better idea, but, you know, the rents won't be low, you know, they're going to be market rate rents, it's a market rate apartment.
So we're incentivizing them to build in Melrose, instead of Soft Center or Albany or St. Cloud or wherever the case may be.
So in the meantime, when we are in need of low-income housing, are there programs where people could, that would qualify for, for need of low-income housing, could live in a building like this and get some sort of help, how we help state help some sort of something or the type?
Yeah, it's possible, I, I don't find to be an expert on Section 8 vouchers or anything like that, but Section 8 vouchers go with the applicant, they do not, you know, you know, it used to be that we built Section 8 housing projects, right? Everybody in them qualified under certain income guidelines. I don't believe it works that way anymore, cause folks apply for a Section 8 voucher and they can take that for everything they need to find housing. and they can take that where everything they need to find housing. So it is possible that folks in this unit or in this development could have a voucher where there is assistance again.
I sort of think we're kind of side routing this thing. She's asking for a workforce house boundary and that's what we're going to do.
Yeah, but it's ten million dollars property that we're not going to be able to tax.
I just know, like, prior to the school board, I was on the planning of zoning and prior to Cleen, and I know Cleen is bad, countless hours. We have tried to lure apartment developers in this town. For my eight years on, I plan to zone in here. But we have somebody and if this is what we have to do with by a nine year commitment, that way we can reap the benefits after nine years.
Yep. So going back, I'm assuming that the developer is not local as far as a taxpayer in our school district?
There actually is a local partner giving us that.
And are they going to use local card break?
I would assume not. We have, you know, we have no guarantees of that, you know? You know, I mean, they're going to get the best price they can and where they can work the folks, they say they will, but we don't have any enforcement.
So the kind of questions we get when we try to build up preference. They are, I mean, we really are subsidizing.
The one thing that we did talk to the developer about, knowing that, you know, making them make sure that their plans are included more three bedrooms than single and two bedrooms, because we feel that the three bedrooms are going to be very appealing for families, especially families that may be generational, might have several people in there. So their three bedrooms could be the size of what a small also would be in some cases. Or in a better condition than perhaps where they're living now. So we did talk to them about making sure that they understood that they needed to build the more two and three bedroom side of it versus the, you know, single.
But that, that was just one of the challenges we did.
That is a discussion, yeah, we didn't put it in the developer's screen.
I'm sounding critical of it. I just am disappointed that it's not low income. I mean, I've driven through the trailer court and I'd like to fix that. And I'm not sure. Not your.
Not your whole home park. This is something.
I drive, yeah. I, you are, I'm not talking about that. I, I just, I wish, I, for my job, I see a need for low income houses. And I, I'm disappointed that the rental.
And there are developers out there that they specialize in tax credit projects. And that's all they do is support them. But there's got to be support hopefully in order for them to commit to something like that.
I'm, I'm not opposed to this. I mean, we did a pro forma along that.
I mean, I agree, our area needs help. And I'm happy for housing, sorry.
But if it is families, we do reap the benefits in school. Even if we don't get, even if we don't get the taxes.
You're using the hospital, you're using the grocery stores, you're using public services. There's more than just the taxes.
And we want the two and three bedroom ones.
Okay. Any other questions?
Thanks for fielding our.
Actually, no, you can't.
Not right now.
Nope, you can talk to them afterwards if you want.
Okay.
Questions or comments?
Wait, wait.
Need a motion? Oh, we didn't. A motion to approve the resolution approving the city of Melrose establishment of workforce housing tax increment financing district, number thirteen dash one, and adopting a tax increment financing plan therefore. And a second. Second, further questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion.
I'm just gonna say, my dear, you're up next.
Motion to approve the achievement and integration plan. So, and a second. Wendy Berry, who's been here three.
Hi, guys.
Wendy's here.
I'm here.
She's here, yes.
I'm here. I, no, come on. How many of these meetings did I sit through, guys? There it is. Hey, guys, how are you? I'm here to go over my achievement and integration plan and budget. So my lovely little slideshow that I put up here. Every three years, Department of Ed requires that we write a new plan. So, and this plan has to go with state statutes and lots of different things. And they change it constantly. So it's Department of Ed. We have a minimum of three goals that we need to do. One of those is directly to our collaborative goal. And I'll get into that a little bit later. I'm not going to read everything to you, read it. Each year I also have to do my budget. So every three years, a new plan, and every year, a budget. My budget, the current budget, and I say current calculated because they do tend to throw curveballs at me. This is what I have so far for next year, one hundred sixty-eight thousand, eight hundred twenty-eight dollars. This is an increase over last year's budget, which is nice. This is all based on PPU, so you guys know as well. So this is showing that we have had an increase in student. I'm required, I have different, I have three different sections that I'm required to spend a certain percentage on. Eighty percent of the budget is direct student services, twenty percent professional development, up to twenty percent professional development, and up to ten percent for administrative and indirect costs. My budget is as follows, as I have, have it calculated out right now. The direct student services, I have eighty-nine point seventy-seven percent. Professional development, three point five. And I can tell you. Administrative indirect is seven point one eight. I do try to put as much money as I possibly can into our direct student services because that's most things for you all, kind of thing. That's what I'm here for and that's what we need to do, so. Our collaborative is seven school districts. Soft Center, Albany, BBE, Osakis, and Painesville are all adjoining districts. Long Prairie is considered racially isolated and Melrose area schools are considered racially isolated. The way it works is being racially isolated, we're here and all districts around us are considered adjoint. When we started this fifteen years ago, we were adjoining to Long Prairie School District because of the number, the, how the numbers worked out with our students of color. We then became our own racially isolated district and were able to put in, bring in a few more districts. Now, I know we don't necessarily adjoin Osakis, but because originally we were with them because of Long Prairie, we decided to make a super collaborative. And the Department of Ed was okay with that, we'll probably go with a collaborative. And we still all do. My collaborative goal is we have student group meetings. We meet with high school and middle school students every other month via Zoom. Each district creates a program for the students to do during the meeting. If we're any subject covered, we attempt to introduce students to different cultures. That is integration, that you might see. Our students enjoy meeting each other and we have lifelong friendships. I've had couple marriages out there. We do, at the end of the year, have all the schools gather. And so because all actually meet face to face and we kind of have the next good party and have some games, stuff that's fun for them to get together.
How many students are we talking about? Let me see if it.
We try, because it's Zoom and you don't want it to get too, too crazy. I have eight for the high school and I have four for the middle school. So it just depends. And we try to, we try to keep it even, so somebody doesn't bring in fifteen and another school has two, try and require everybody to have the same number just so it's even out. And on Zoom, it kind of is not crazy. Many people. Goal number two is my increasing graduation rates. These are some of the programs that I do. Egg, extended graduation goal helps promote, help promote graduation rates. Study hall restructure, which is our rent rooms. We have middle school, high school, and elementary. Careers class, this is a high school class to help students prepare for their futures. Pre-K readiness, it's a summer program that we have. Or, excuse me, preschool, sorry. One book, one school, I supported this for many, many years. And I contribute to the funding for, for the one book, one school. Jumpstart kindergarten, great program. We have our current teachers identify students who might need some extra help to start kindergarten when they go to kindergarten grade up. So it becomes an easier transition for them. And we do it about, do it in August. And each of the kindergarten teachers takes some time so they all get to know the students. And so the first days are not very traumatic for some of our students. Whoops. Goal number three, staff development. We have a lot of staff development that is already provided. And that's why I don't put a ton of this into it because, yeah, we have a lot that we have, is already provided in five districts, so, but I still have some. There you go, guys. Tried from draft.
Yeah, I just asked, you know, we have a new board member on. About every three years, yes, they redo our budget. And I just want to make sure that everybody understands what the achievement and integration plan is about. Just to kind of give a quick overview of it, the funds it provides and the services it also provides for our district.
And where does this money come?
It comes from, from the state through achievement and integration. It was a special grant started, ooh, probably about thirty years ago, to be honest with you. The big districts involved started with Minneapolis, St. Paul, and Duluth were the originals. And it was because of the racial isolation within those districts and to help them become unracially isolated. As of right now, I've been doing this for fifteen years and I've probably been doing it all. So, yeah. They call me a lot, actually, I talk to the Department of Ed a lot.
And every three years, you have to reapply for the money?
No, no, it's automatic. Yep, we're in. So it origin, when I originally started doing this, there's a lot of questions about, oh, are they going to continue forward with the ANI funding, da, da, da? That stopped probably ten years ago. And now they just kind of continue forward because the Department of Ed, the state of Minnesota, the legislature understands that we need this funding to do the program. So.
It's not funded from our general fund?
No, it is not. I one hundred percent make sure that everything that I do with my funding covers everything that I do, that I don't go over it and it does not come out of the general fund. I'm very, very cautious of that.
What is the advantage of having a collaboration of them and these schools? I mean, because it obviously doesn't affect your funding because each school has their own entity.
To be, to, to introduce students to each other is, is the best thing. For, I always use Osakis because they're probably the most unracially diverse school in our collaborative. And so they, so they get to have students of color from our, from our district. Talk to them, become friends with them and introduce them to different cultures, different ideas, different ways of life, that sort of thing, so. It's been great, guys. The whole, the whole thing is COVID was kind of a bummer, with the Zoom programming and stuff, so. But it's, we're making it work now. And because it is such a huge collaborative, the Department of Ed had always argued with me that they wanted, they wanted us to bus everybody to all these different schools. I'm not taking my kids out of school for half a day or a whole day. Think of Painesville to Long Prairie, that's a long, right? That's, that's a lot of downtime. And so Zoom became the best thing for us. And I had to explain to the Department of Ed, you guys don't understand how big.
How far we're going.
How far I'm taking this. So they have, they understand, part of the bed.
How often do the kids meet?
We, so the high school, we do it every other month. So high school, one month, middle school the next month. So it just changes off and we need to have good funding.
Is this something the kids ask to be in or are they still?
Um, some, some do, but I do recruit kids as well. So, yeah. And again, like I said, had a couple of marriages out of it. So, yeah, so they do become lifelong friends, I guess. I don't try to promote that part of it, just so you guys know. So I just need you guys, your approval on both of those things. And if you guys ever have any questions, feel free to call, happy to talk to you. Okay?
Thank you, Wendy.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Uh, I'm, thank you.
I gave you each a copy of the school calendar. It's been on our website, graph that shared it all, because we needed it.
A motion to, uh, what, two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school calendar?
I saw one.
And a second.
You have a copy of the in front of you, we had it in graph form on our website to gain a little feedback. I haven't really gotten a lot of feedback over the years, except for last year when there was a four year parents that wanted to start the workshop day on Tuesday to Wednesday. Well, we're doing it a week later this year because we're past our third year of the practice starting early. And this is basically a composite of things over the years that I've dealt with here, dealing with administration, dealing with the union, dealing with professional development. So it's something we've been working on, got some feedback on it, and just a couple of highlights. We do have a wrestling tournament on December first. So that would be a scheduled e-learning day due to that wrestling tournament on that day.
How many people is that?
Uh, how many wrestlers do we have that day?
Like our old students?
Yeah, our old.
Probably looking at thirty. You talked about the building.
Yeah, the building. Yeah.
The only thing I get nervous about is, is we're, I think we just did it last year.
We do it every year.
This is, this is every year, so it was thought, instead of doing a e-day, you know, a lot of schools are doing, and we talked about possibly having a planned the e-learning day for practice in it. This was kind of, was actually trying to work above that of the program.
I just get nervous when we're starting to plan e-learning days, especially this year with so many snow. Do we go off of history or do we go off of trends?
I think this is, I think this is an anomaly of how many snow days that we have. We have, we've had, except for the first few years I was here, we've had very few. But we also know that if we need to use more than the five e-learning days, we can do that.
How many more?
It's not how many more e-learning days, it's how many student contact days the district can wait before the state, you know, required.
So we just had our number five or we've got number six?
Number six, number six, but how many are we above the six? You're six over, our state minimum.
So we could technically have six.
You're, you're throwing a lot of numbers together here. So first of all, the five e-learning days did not, the five previous e-learning days do not count towards the minimum number of student contact days. So right now, if you want to think of as a benchmark, our minimum would be about a hundred and sixty-six days. We're at a hundred and seventy-five. So we have nine days before it reaches that. Mr. Duckett and I would have to do the exact calculations because you have to have a thousand sixty hours. So we're not even close to that point yet. And if we got close to that point yet, then we'd start.
Whoa, we're closer than we ever have been.
Well, he used one.
Only one?
Because the first five counted as student contact days.
Those count towards those days.
He kind of sounded backwards, wait.
Yeah, your explanation, I think, I, 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 I thought.
Randy's math. He have a lot of trouble, he used.
Well, mine.
No, 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 we used one.
As you know, our con, our contract with the teachers allows us more than the state minimum. Like how many days?
Nine.
Five days.
Oh, nine.
The state can tell us that we can use how many e-days towards our state minimum? Five. So we're already beyond that. But the teachers would rather, I think, the teachers would rather do an e-day and come back in June.
I think the students as well.
Yeah.
And the, the students could be, in the past, we've forgiven them. So, but you're right, the students, as far as student contact, we're just getting more effective learning by doing e-learning now than we would in June.
So this proposed school year, how, how many days, and so we have the minimum one sixty-five? Was that content days? One sixty-six. One sixty-six.
That's the state minimum.
Well, we have said one seventy-five.
One seventy-five.
One seventy-five. The teacher contract. Oh, God, thank you.
Twenty years ago, the district negotiated more school days with the idea that would improve that.
Okay.
This was all part of that.
So we could potentially have eleven snow days. Five, beautiful winter. We're required to have one thousand sixty hours, so.
Okay.
I just, I think the public gets confused because they hear all the state only allows you so many.
Yeah, yeah.
Why are you still, how can you still do them? But it's better now than it. And if the state, and if the teachers are on board with us doing e-days now, then again, more effective learning now than it.
Wasn't there, what, the first year that you were on the board, wasn't there a high of days too? That was pretty brutal, like.
June thirteenth.
We had staff development.
We forgave them and think that.
Some of the students, yes.
Yep. Yes.
A lot more than this.
It was very late.
Snow. Yeah.
Because I do, we had, in, in those calendars, we had some of the, like, Monday after Easter was the snow makeup day. And it was beyond all of those makeup days. The snow came later. I just wanted to make sure we weren't gonna. No.
We're everything we can to try to make sure that.
That's nice.
I just get nervous when we schedule e-learning days.
Yeah, and, and once again, coming from the principal's point of view, a lot of schools do that just to kind of run through it one time, work above that a bit. But please understand, if it's possible to have a snow day, we'll get that. But it's just that day, if you schedule that as a PVA or non-student day, now you start a ripple effect through the calendar. Now you're going to another day in June. And some of the, some of the discussion was also, just to let you be aware of it, of on the Christmas break, of having a student contact day on the twenty-second. And in looking, looking at this, we find out a lot of students, particularly our Latino students, like to go on vacation over Christmas break to go back down to Mexico, but we don't want to take off a day there. There was some concern from the PD committees of having a PD day, so a day later in the year. We put that on April second. So I think if you remember for those that are sitting here, number one, you're never gonna have a calendar that everyone's gonna, everybody's gonna agree upon, and every year, there's gonna be different circumstances that determines the scope of the calendar. This is just a, and a proposal that we put out there, put out for feedback, and in, for me working in the principal group, some of the information that feedback they get, especially from coaches on ball, uh, startup of ball sports, et cetera, so.
This is only a curiosity question. I have nothing to shoot with it, but normally we do Thursday, Friday, Monday with the meeting. This is one Saturday, Friday.
Thursday, Friday, Mondays will happen for one year. That was just this year.
Well, that was just this year.
We've never done that in the past.
I'll, I'll throw in the community comment of the e-days. Whatever we can do as far as simultaneous learning, to whatever we could actually do, whatever we could do to make those more productive. From the, from the parent's perspective.
That is our number, that's my number one gripe. They don't, they're not a fan of e-learning. They're a bigger fan of distant learning, and I know that's.
The same day that last week when we were dealing with this, when I was being with the principals, we did take out the e-learning plan and take a look at that and see how we can make that better as well. So for myself and the principals, we do have some proposals to try to make that better.
Make e-learning better or incorporate distant learning?
Make it more interactive.
Make it more interactive. But like you said, it's a, they don't have to negotiate.
It's definitely out there in the public. They would much rather have it as a distant learning than e-learning.
But what do you, what's the difference?
Just more simultaneous.
The teacher's actually teaching online classes instead of just handing out homework and saying, I'm available. Just do me a question. So if you're like my kid, he's done with his homework and a half hour.
Synchronous learning.
Because there are teachers that are doing that, are doing interactive things. Yes.
There are, and whatever we can, I know that we can't, limits to what we can require, but whatever we can do to positively reinforce that kind of, that, that kind of stuff is good. Because that's what, that's what family they're looking for.
So, in the middle school, high school, I don't know, I don't know, are those teachers giving many students that reach out between that nine and one o'clock? Do you have any idea? What round?
I don't anticipate it's a lot.
I, I know the middle school teachers are, have their Zoom open for the most part, that entire time, because I send out that link to all the parents and students, and that whole spreadsheet for our e-learning days, that teachers are available, like, I'll check in with teachers throughout the day, all day, and that there's, they're ready to answer questions if kids have them.
Did you ever ask? I would say more so in the middle school, they might, than in high school.
Yes, and, and I think it all depends on what that teacher's asking the kids to do. As a math teacher, I would never introduce a new lesson
Right.
on an e-learning day where I would review and, you know, check in with a few kids and you would assume, or if you didn't, you know, most kids wouldn't have an idea of what is going on.
My. They had questions. Your teachers are on, ninety-one, why don't you ask?
So this is just a bad question. I mean, aren't some of these planned lessons that they're going over, I mean, they're the e-textbooks. Do they have lectures that they can, that they can pull down or that they can look at for, for those subjects?
So you're, you're probably thinking back, so when we adopted our new math curriculum, that came with all pre-town lessons. Again, with the world of textbooks, that's something, like, our whole math curriculum does not have a digital access anymore. We created our own digital access to it, where I take CDs that download, that's in Google Drive, and then teachers have uploaded them to Canvas. So kids have the textbook online because they have, now all these textbook companies have merged, and that stuff for our own curriculum has gone away, which is unfortunate. We like the curriculum, but the resources aren't there like they were ten years ago when I was teaching math for that great.
In the elementary, the teachers are open, their desks are open the whole time, and those kids are on there, and they do have breaks all the time where they work one-on-one with kids too, so that they, they can actually do a tutoring on the side so they don't have to do it in front of their peers.
Sure.
And so they, they do have them open. But yes, when we did distant learning, we taught for two hours straight and made sure we had reading and math, and then a break in the middle with their specialists, but that was distant learning.
If you do a combination of both, that would be ideal.
Like Mr. Winter said, we're looking at.
Some suggestions.
Yeah, they sound productive morning time. Never gonna be.
We will look at different schedules so that kids can run all seven classes for fifteen minutes each or something. There's check-ins, but there's a few hurdles to overcome. Are we okay with what, are we okay with what we did this year?
I mean, I, yeah. And then the teachers are okay with it, Paris.
Well, they have their.
Who I would say.
We're just trying to put the best possible calendar.
Once again, this calendar has been reviewed, it's got all the answers, and this is the final, final.
They look at it, they have some concerns that I talked about. They want to do some things differently, but you talked about administration. You know, you gotta remember, everybody's looking at it from their perspective. I've got to look at it, and I work with the principals to look at it. Everybody's perspective.
And they've been offered the LMC committee.
Yep, and I did a meeting with Sandy and right last weekend, but they don't want a formal meeting.
And staff development, elementary and middle school, high school kind of talked about another way of doing this, but too late to get it going for this year, so maybe it'll be something they'll look at next year's calendar.
Any more questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor of approving this calendar, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Item F, motion to approve the district coordinator contract for twenty twenty, for twenty twenty-two, twenty-three to man twenty twenty-three, twenty-four. Motion, please.
Someone.
And a second. Issues or comments? Standard to your contract. Questions or comments for anybody, the superintendent or committee members? Hearing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion for adjournment? And a second? Questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.